I'd like to call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education for October 14th, 2013 to order. I'd like to ask everyone, if you're able, to please stand for our invocation, immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance. I've asked Mr. Bob Morris to lead us in our invocation. Mr. Morris?
On behalf of the Father, we pray that we may do our best to grow manly and morally, as well as physically, to be kind and helpful to our students and our staff, to be honest with ourselves, as well as others, teach us the value of friendship, let us disagree with respect, help us always to conduct ourselves so that we bring credit and honor to Haywood County schools. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We were discussing earlier tonight, it would be nice if every board meeting, we had this many people come, and I'm sure they'd be welcome to be here. I know our board is excited to have this many folks here tonight. I'd like to let everyone know that Mr. Rogers couldn't be here tonight because of a business commitment he had down in Moultrie, Georgia. That's a little bit far to try to commute back and forth, so he sends that he cannot be here tonight, and apologizes that he had a prior business engagement. Board members, I'd like to formally announce tonight that Mr. Walt Leatherwood has agreed to chair our Building and Grounds Committee. Mr. Leatherwood has served in that capacity in the past, done an excellent job, and oversaw numerous building projects, and if you don't know, we are in the middle of a building project down at Pisgah High School. And so Walt, or Mr. Leatherwood, we appreciate your willingness to serve as our Chair of our Building and Grounds Committee. Our next regular board meeting will be here at the Education Center on November the 12th at 7:00. Board members, you're aware of the North Carolina School Board Association has their annual conference, November 18th through the 20th, and if you haven't registered or haven't gotten your information to Leanna, please get it to Ms. Moody as soon as possible. Are there any other announcements that we need to make at this time? Are there any agenda adjustments that you're aware? Okay. The board recognizes Mr. Mark Shepherd for some special recognition tonight.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm very happy to be able to present to you tonight Ms. Tammy Ensley, who was selected by her peers in the North Carolina Cheerleading Coaches Association as the Cheerleading Coach of the Year.
I just want to say thank you. I love Pisgah, and I love my job at Pisgah, and I love coaching at Pisgah. I'm very lucky to get to work with cheerleaders almost every day. I know a lot of people might not like that job as much as me, but I'm very, very fortunate, and I love it, and hope I can do another eight years.
Tammy, on behalf of the Haywood County Board of Education, a certificate of congratulations presented to Tammy Ensley, 2014 North Carolina Cheerleading Coaches Association Coach of the Year. Congratulations.
The board would like to recognize Ms. Jenny Wood at this time.
Thank you. Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, it's once again my pleasure to recognize and publicly thank the Quick Draw Committee. This committee works endlessly to raise money for the art program here in Haywood County schools, and in some cases, this is the only supply money that art teachers receive. Over the past 11 years, this event, Quick Draw, has provided the teachers and students with $85,446 in grant and scholarship monies. I would like to recognize the committee members who are here tonight, and ask them to come up here and stand before we present the teachers with their checks tonight. Terry McCracken, who's the Chair, Bronwyn McCracken, Kim Powers, Lynn Milner, I think that's it. So, and now, the art teachers, each full-time art teacher received a check, is going to receive a check for $850, and then our one part-time art teacher will receive a check for $425 for supplies this year. Caroline Ottinger from Jonathan Valley in Bethel. Nicole Wilhelm, who is at Clyde Central in Riverbend. Anell Wogan at North Canton in Meadowbrook. Carolyn DeGrove at Pisgah. Billy Love from Tuscola. Stephen Harrison, Canton Middle. Julie Buchanan at Geniluska, Hazelwood, and Riverbend. Tara O'Laughlin, Waynesville Middle. And Julie Jacobs-Sloan from Bethel Middle. And I'm going to turn it over to Terry McCracken for just a few comments.
Basically, what I want to do is just thank you for all your support and how you help us make Quick Draw happen. Every year, Quick Draw gets bigger and bigger and better and better. This year, we have a new date, it's May the 17th, and we need to get that publicized, always before it's been the last Saturday in April. But this year, your spring break was coinciding with that date, and we can't do this event without you. The teachers work tirelessly to help us get ready. The students are so impressive when they come. They are runners, they help all those art, the artists get all their materials together and then back in their cars, and then your staff comes in the afternoon and brings big folder, those big trifles, so that student artwork can be displayed, and the people who come to Quick Draw can see what happens to the money that they contribute to that program. This year, we expanded a little bit, and Todd's crew came and helped us. We were looking for somebody to help with sound system, and they came up, and they were great. So, I just want to thank you for your support in the past, and I hope that you're going to continue to support us, because $85,000 is a lot of money to bring back into the school system. I'd also like to recognize Lynn, and thank Lynn. It's great to have a board member on that committee, I'll tell you that. And also Jenny, we just couldn't do everything we do without Jenny. She's right on site, and it's been so good to have her on our committee, and we appreciate the fact that she gets released to come maybe once, we meet about three times, and she comes those three times and helps us, and she serves as the Secretary on our committee. We are always working for ways to get money and to make this program more than just what we can do in a one-night event. So, last year, we started working really hard to do a professional package on having donors contribute to Quick Draw. And I want you to thank the banks around the county, because so many of the local banks gave us just a flat-out donation so that we could get started. So, and we published in the mountaineer, on the back of the guide, all those people who made nice contributions to Quick Draw. You also had a board member, Bob Morris, who made a contribution. He was a donor last year, and we appreciate that. The door is wide open, so come on in, make a donation. And I would just like to say that there's 11 women on this committee, and you can get a lot done with that many women. So, thank you.
I'd also like to thank the Quick Draw Committee and all that they do for Haywood County schools. It's a tremendous event. If you've never been, I would suggest that you put it on your calendar, because it's a lot of fun, and it's a great fundraiser for Haywood County schools. The board will now recognize Ms. Allison Francis for some special recognition.
Mr. Francis, board members, I'm happy to be here tonight to recognize one of our arts, up-and-coming young artists in Haywood County, Kennedy Connor, if you'd like to come up, please. Can you come up here? Kennedy is a first grader at North Canton, and last year, she submitted some artwork to the North Carolina Farm-to-School Program. They had 3,800 entries in 56 counties in North Carolina, and she was one of the 13 pieces of artwork that was selected to be in the North Carolina Farm-to-School Calendar. I passed those out to you earlier, but her artwork is featured for the month of January. But she did a fabulous job, and they recognized her at the Mountain State Fair back in September, and she also received a gift card courtesy of the North Carolina Farmer School Cooperative, and a one-year subscription to our state magazine. We also put together a little poster for her with a copy of her artwork and a picture of her receiving her award at the state fair, the Mountain State Fair, and a little certificate for her, so you can go home and hang that on your wall, okay? Thank you. I also have another wonderful person I'd like to introduce you to and tell you more about, Barbara Fowler, who is the Cafeteria Manager at Tuscola High School. Barbara, would you come up, please? Every summer, the North Carolina School Nutrition Association honors one director, one manager, and one cafeteria assistant for the Mary Long Beasley Distinguished Service Award. Mary Long was a director in Wake County that passed away from cancer back in the 90s, and her family receives nominations every year, and they actually choose the winner and present the award at our conference, and it's always a surprise. No one ever knows who the winner is until that moment. And myself, and Mr. McDonald, and one of the other cafeteria managers submitted nominations for Barbara, and they compiled those, and they, Mr. Beasley read the information out to award the, award, sorry. And as they were reading it, I wasn't even sure if she had won, I was just listening to see, oh, is that what I wrote? And they started talking about a cafeteria manager that was dedicated and did anything ever asked, with a smile, was always willing to just roll with it, and was just a fantastic example, and loved working with students, was a great leader. And aside from that, she's also a full-time bus driver, so she works eight hours a day in the cafeteria and drives a bus route. And every summer, we have a conference, a national conference, that she and another manager always attend, and they like to call themselves Thelma and Louise, because no matter how far it is, they always choose to drive. This past year, it was in Kansas City, Missouri, and they drove to Kansas City, Missouri. Prior to that, it was in Denver, Colorado. They drove to Denver, Colorado. They make a wonderful trip out of it. And so, she said she didn't really realize it was her until she heard Thelma and Louise. She said, you know, when I asked her about it, she said, you know, I really, I could totally identify with the person they were talking about. I had no idea it was me. But Barbara is an outstanding manager, and we are very proud to have her. I know Mr. McDonald also thanks very much of Barbara, but I'd like to show you the beautiful award she was given. And Haywood County is very fortunate to have her. She declines to speak. The Haywood County Board of Education Certificate of Congratulations presented to Barbara Fowler in recognition of winning the 2013 Mary Long Beasley Award for Distinguished Service. Thank you. And just another quick mention, I have several copies of these left that I'll put over here, and as you leave, if you would like a copy, please pick one up. Thank you.
Barbie's sure you didn't want to speak to the board or anything.
It was just an honor to be nominated.
She said it was an honor to be nominated. Congratulations on behalf of all of us here tonight. We appreciate your hard work and dedication for our students at Tuscola High School. Thank you. Now, board members, I would like to ask if you would join me down front so that we
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the National Association of Secondary Principals and the National Association of Elementary School Principals have declared October 2013 as National Principals Month. The North Carolina Principal and Assistant Principals Association, or PAPA, supports this effort and wishes to recognize all North Carolina principals for the essential role that they play in leading schools in this state. Principals are among the hardest-working, yet very often least-recognized individuals in education. Principals set the academic tone for their schools, and it's their vision, dedication, and determination that provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort. National Principals Month seeks to honor these unsung heroes for their tireless efforts in pursuit of excellence in education. I would now like to present certificates of award to our Principals and Assistant Principals. This certificate is presented to Sherri Arrington as Principal of Geniluska Elementary School for your continuous efforts in the pursuit of excellence in education. In recognition of National Principals Month, October 2013, Ms. Arrington. Mr. Greg Bailey, Principal at Pisgah High School. Mr. Todd Barbie, Principal of North Canton Elementary. Mrs. Jill Barker, Principal of Bethel Elementary. Mr. David Blair, Assistant Principal of Waynesville Middle School. We did have some nod activities tonight. Natalie Boone as Assistant Principal of Bethel Elementary and Bethel Middle School. Mrs. Jill Chambers, Principal of Riverbend Elementary. Mr. Travis Collins, Principal at Canton Middle, he had a soccer match. Mr. Clint Connor, Principal of Clyde Elementary. Mrs. Laurie Fox, Assistant Principal at Pisgah High School. Mrs. Stephanie Goodwin, Assistant Principal at Tuscola High School. Dr. Doris Green, Principal of Haywood Early College. Mr. Jeff Haney, Principal at Central Haywood High School. Mr. Matthew Haney, Assistant Principal at Pisgah High School. Mrs. Heather Hollinsworth, Principal at Jonathan Valley Elementary. Mr. Kyle Leffert, Principal at the Alternative Learning Center. Mr. Rodney Mashburn, Assistant Principal at Tuscola High School. Mr. Dale McDonald, Principal of Tuscola High School. Mr. Bobby Parker, Assistant Principal at Waynesville Middle School. Mrs. Sean Pears, Principal at Bethel Middle School. Mr. Trevor Putnam, Principal of Waynesville Middle School. Mrs. Wendy Rogers, Principal of Central Elementary. Mrs. Susan Savage, Principal of Hazelwood Elementary, she had an open house tonight. Mrs. Kim Shipman, Assistant Principal of Waynesville Middle School. Mrs. Belinda Trantham, Assistant Principal at Clyde Elementary. Mrs. Connie Weeks, Assistant Principal at Pisgah High School. Mrs. Chelsea White, Assistant Principal at Tuscola High School. Mrs. Anna Williams, Principal of Meadowbrook.
Next on our agenda, the board would like to recognize Ms. Jan Nesbit.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, in late August, Haywood County Schools was notified that 174 Title I schools in North Carolina was receiving the Title I Reward School Distinction. The schools were selected based on assessment data from the 2011, 2012 school year and the two previous years. A reward school is a Title I school that is recognized in one of two ways. First of all, they can be recognized as the highest-performing school, which is a school among the top 10% of Title I schools in the state that have the highest absolute performance over a number of years for the "all-students" category and for all subgroups on the statewide assessments. Or, they can be recognized as a high-progress school, which is a school among the 10% of Title I schools in the state that are making the most progress in improving the performance of all-students group over a number of years on the statewide assessment. The top 10% of reward schools are invited to submit a portfolio to identify the best practices contributing to the school's success. Portfolios are peer-reviewed by members of the Title I Distinguished Schools Advisory Council, with onsite visits conducted to determine one school for each category to represent the state of North Carolina in the National Title I Distinguished Schools Program. At this time, I would like to recognize the five schools from Haywood County. Now, remember, there were only 174 of all of our schools in the state. The five schools recognized by the state as Title I reward schools are Meadowbrook Elementary, Hazelwood Elementary, and I know they have open house tonight, and Jonathan Valley Elementary. Of these schools, two of our schools, two of those five schools were recognized as being the top 10% of those reward schools, of the 174 reward schools. And those two schools are Bethel Elementary and Jonathan Valley Elementary. Both of these schools submitted portfolios, and once those, there were actually 20 schools that were in the, of the schools that got the portfolio, and of those 20, those schools submitted their portfolio, and both Bethel Elementary and Jonathan Valley submitted a portfolio, and we're pleased to announce that on September 30th, Jonathan Valley Elementary received a visit from the Title I Distinguished School Advisory Committee, and on October the 31st, at the state Title I Conference, we will find out, because it's actually between two schools, between Tryon Elementary and Jonathan Valley Elementary. So, we are so pleased and proud, so join us in celebrating with them. And we want to make it two years in a row, because as you remember, last year, Bethel Elementary received this distinction, and what an honor that they got that portfolio again this year. And so, that speaks highly for our school system, when you have five of the nine elementary, and the rest of them just barely miss it, because they have to have 50% or higher on their free and reduced lunch every month. So, if you go below one month, you're kind of out. So, what an accomplishment.
Congratulations again to all the Title I reward schools. Thank you very much for your service. Now is the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and/or personnel. We've had a request from Karen Arias Roach, is that correct? Does Roche?
Roach.
Roach, okay. You may come forward. I apologize for butchering your name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Muy buenas tardes. I was asked to come and speak and maybe share a little bit about my experience coming from another country and comparing school systems. I came here to the United States in 1984 as a 14-year-old child, refugee, and I soon found myself, I had just finished seventh grade in my country, and when my transcripts came to the United States, to the school, I realized that my seventh-grade education in Nicaragua was the equivalent was the equivalent of a 10th grade education here in the United States. And I'm not here to criticize, because believe me, I know that the educators here deserve a lot of praise, because they spend most of the day with my... You know, with our children. But I wanted to talk about maybe the standards that we have and letting these brilliant children that we have in our school system to learn more or better, to be able to have this opportunity to maybe have community forums in which, as a community, we can work together. I have now a 10-year-old child who's an AIG. And as he was coming up in school, I oftentimes had conversations with my husband about the things that he was learning at the grade that he was in, where in my schools, where I was growing up, we were more advanced as far as math and history and science and language. So, I'm just here to share that and to, you know, say that we definitely need to be able to have more conversations with the community and maybe forums into which we can implement other types of systems that could better produce, you know, better quality education for our children than I'm saying on the list that it's not good enough here. I come from Louisiana, and is a step up from where I come from. And one of the things that has kept me here, living in Waynesville, because I'm a transplant from Louisiana for Katrina, is that I know that my kids are getting a better education in Haywood County. That's all there is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a request from Ms. Jessica White to address the Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I had no idea that there were this many people, so I've sat in my chair getting more and more nervous. But I'm so happy to be here for all this celebration. It's really fantastic. I came to this meeting tonight because there are discussions and conversations happening across our county about where we are with our schools now and where we would like to be in the future. And I came tonight to learn more about our goals and how we can work together to achieve success for all our students in Haywood County. Because measurable change is most likely to happen when there's real collaboration among parents and teachers, administrators, and our community. I couldn't come to last month's meeting, but I did watch it on YouTube. And I understand that there are parents who have legitimate concerns about course offerings and academic rigor in our schools. I know that's on the agenda for this evening. In every school system, not just in our school system, but across the state and across the nation, there is work to be done if we really are going to serve our students and promote their successes. This means that we recognize the things that we're currently doing right, which is all of this, and that we also have to take an honest look at areas that need improvement and make plans to address those areas where we're lacking or where we're not serving our students well. I know that Dionne has some information to share this evening. And one of the slides and what she will present is referring to the Lighthouse Study, which indicates that high-achieving school districts identify students and their needs through looking at data. And in turn, they use that data to drive continuous improvement for students. And regarding areas where we might be lacking in our school system, we shouldn't be afraid to have discussions about data that's negative. And we certainly shouldn't greet negative information with a blaming perspective or denying that there are areas for improvement, as often happens in low-achieving districts. I mean, clearly, we can look at the successes in our county, and we can celebrate those things, and we should. But we can also see from current data that there are areas where we need improvement in our school system in order to help our students be successful. But those should be the areas that we look at and say, "What do we need to do to change this and to be the best that we can be in these areas?" I know from firsthand experience, I just came from Hazelwood's open house night, and I know that our teachers and our administrators are just working amazingly hard. And they truly care about the success of our students. And our superintendent was just recognized as being outstanding in our region. So, there are successes. I'm extremely supportive of our hard-working teachers and administrators, because I know how hard they work. So, I came here tonight to be a part of helping to achieve this mission for our schools. And is my time... And I'd like... My last bit is here. I would like to be a part of helping to achieve the mission of our schools, to be passionate about serving students, to be the best in the world at promoting student success, and to be productive at serving students and promoting that success.
Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you. I hope I'm saying this one right. Kelly Slate, did I say it correctly? Okay.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board, Board Members, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Garrett. Tonight, I would like to share this letter that I wrote to the committee who created the policy SA 20. Dear Mr. Mark Shepherd, I am writing in reference to the draft policy SA 20, "Student with Food Allergies." As a parent of a student with a life-threatening allergy, this policy affects our family's lives so very closely. I am writing not to complain or dismiss this policy, but to applaud its initial intent to lessen the risk of a life-threatening situation. As an employee of Haywood County Schools, I feel this policy acceptance is crucial to the protection, not only to our students, but also the educators and administrators who care for these students daily. I appreciate the education components contained in this policy that brings awareness to all parties involved in this growing food allergy epidemic. It is an epidemic for which researchers and scientists have not found a treatment or a cure. In saying this, avoidance of the food which triggers anaphylaxis is the key in protecting these students. I feel that voting this policy into effect will send a message to the community that Haywood County Schools is committed to bringing awareness of this serious issue that exists in our schools. The implementation of individual written health plans and emergency action plans will impact how effective this policy will be. Time and consideration must be taken to create these plans to ensure the safety and health of our food-allergic children. This policy states it shall and must uphold these plans. As a parent of a nut-allergic child, it is comforting to know that I have a say in how my child must be protected. In closing, I want to personally thank Allison Francis, Director of Child Nutrition, and Jill Chambers, Principal of Riverbend Elementary, who listened to my concerns and worked to accommodate the needs of my child at Riverbend. I am very grateful to Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte for taking the time to meet with me and my husband to discuss this serious issue. I also want to thank the committee members who wrote this policy draft. I fully understand the controversy behind this issue and commend their dedication to lessening the risk of a life-threatening situation in this growing number of students with food allergies. I feel this policy is a solid and reasonable initiative in keeping our students with food allergies safe in our schools. My family is greatly appreciative to everyone for striving to keep our son and other students safe in our school environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slate. The Board recognizes Rena Steele. Did I say that correctly, Rena?
Renee.
Renee!
I might have misspelled it.
Well, I know Renee. I don't know Rena.
Mr. Francis and the Board, and Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte. I just wanted to focus tonight, and it also has a lot to do with what Jessica White said and what Ms. Arias said. I just want to focus on this part of the Haywood County Schools' vision, which states, "Success for today through cooperative involvement of students, parents, educators, and the total community." The Haywood County Schools' vision statement is reflective of our commitment to family and community involvement, high expectations for all students, and child-centered schools. As a parent, I feel that this vision could be better realized if communication were improved between all: parents, students, board members, educators, and community members. I'd like to know when and where parents, students, and the community can meet with the school board and educators to discuss priorities and specific date-driven goals outside of the official monthly school board meetings in a more conversational and less formal setting. Ideally, a setting that encourages an exchange of ideas, concerns, and solutions in a collaborative manner, a positive environment where families, school board members, and educators work together and openly communicate in a constructive manner. I strongly feel that a three-minute block of time in a school board meeting is simply not enough time to promote this kind of interaction and communication and dialogue between these groups. So, I know we're beating a dead horse, but I just wanted to get that point across. So, thank you. And it was an honor tonight to hear all the wonderful accomplishments in the school system. I think it's just great. So, I was happy to be here this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. I've got one more chance to mess up a name, so I'm going to take it. Dionne Gossi. Was I close?
And I have way too much, so I'll just be emailing you something, and you can read it later. I want to just kind of reiterate what they said, that it would be great to have a longer conversation and actually have some back and forth about these issues. So, I hope that we get a structure in place that will allow us to do that. We know that there's a lot of new... I know, as you saw, people come up here, you're like, "Oh, that's the new person from there." And there's a lot of new, and we acknowledge that. And we encourage our Board to set the priorities, to really choose what's important, and then let's get some dates on these things. If you go to our mission statement and our vision statement, right after that is our strategic plan, which is this very long list. It's very thorough, which is good. You guys have, you know, everything from like how to promote healthy eating to the fact that we want language in our elementary schools very soon. But there's no dates on any of it. So, I know that, you know, we'll be hearing, I think, from some teachers tonight talking about some AP classes. And we know that there's disparity between, you know, half, at least half the classes are offered at Pisgah that are offered at Tuscola. And I know that goal has some clear, clear things to say about, "Let's have at least four core academic APs at each of the high schools." And I think we've met that at one school, but we're still not there on the other. We're starting to offer, you know, some nice 8th grade accelerated classes. Christine Basulto and Mr. Putnam, I don't know if he's still here, are really driving a lot of that at the middle school. And we support what they're doing. We're excited to see all four academic areas have high school credit in 8th grade, which is pretty standard across the country. We look forward to that. We also just want to see access to more kids. We don't want to see a number stuck on, "Hey, we're going to have 40 AP kids, and sorry, that's all we've got, so we're going to have a test, and if you don't make it, you know, try again next year." We want to see more people access... Carol and I were talking about the HCC, the new NSF grant. And we want to see more kids, you know, in those vocational classes. We don't want to see 19% taking AP classes and 22% taking vocational and wondering what's happening to the rest after high school. So, we want to get some real dates. And like I said, I have a very long PowerPoint presentation that could take, you know, 20 minutes for all of you, and we could talk about it. But we have three minutes. So, that's my big thing, is let's get some dates and let's put some goals behind it. And one of the things in our vision is that we're good to be great, but I think we need to define great. These people are doing a good job. I mean, there's a lot of people working really, really, really hard, and we appreciate that. But I think that if you see the parents and you see the, like they said, everybody working together, we will define great differently. We will not be talking in a couple of years about Title I schools. We will be talking about our elementary schools being the best schools in the state, irregardless of Title I status. We will be looking at our high schools, and we'll be looking at US News and World Report, instead of seeing A.C. Reynolds in there as a silver medal school. We'll be seeing Tuscola or Pisgah. We'll be seeing, maybe one day, a gold medal school. So, let's put a date on those goals. Let's be great.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate all the public comments this evening, and we will refer those to our superintendent and to this Board. Let's see. Where am I at? Okay, there we go. The Board recognizes Mr. Greg Parker. Thank you.
Chairman Francis, members of the Board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. I just wanted to give you a quick rundown on the PEP grant. We have just completed the second year of the grant. You have some information there in a red folder. The first page talks about the first year and second year data results. And I won't read them to you, but I'll just... If you look at the baseline on the left versus the end-of-year average after year two on the right, you can see that there's been a great improvement in those three measures that we're required to do to make sure we're getting the bang for our buck out of that. But we've gone from a baseline of 3% to 33 in the first measure, from 42 to 49 in the second, and from 5 to 53 in the third. And that, in two years' time, that's pretty good. There are documents that support that in the back of this folder that breaks it down by school. We've got a long agenda, and I'm not going to get into all that, but that's kind of the breakdown on the front. The second page talks about the amount of money that was spent from that grant and where it went. You can see it was distributed to every school, some more than others, but the catch-up will take place in year three. We put in a wonderful fitness room at Pisgah High School. That same facility will be installed at Tuscola this year. And you can see all the other schools, elementary schools, they all got a lot of money and a lot of equipment out of the grant. The third piece of paper in there is an outline of year three. It talks about kind of what's on the horizon for this year and what we're going to be doing with this year's grant monies. The top is about the facilities and equipment. The bottom, training opportunities for PE teachers. And that's pretty much a, you know, if they're interested, we try to send them to any of these things. I'm not going to drag this out. If you have any questions, I would try to answer them. You know, Natalie's done a good job with this so far, and I'll try not to drop the ball.
Mr. Parker, I appreciate you sharing this information tonight. And I would urge each Board Member to... We'll take a look at it, and if you have questions, we'll either get you to come back or meet with you individually on any questions we may have.
That'd be great.
But I appreciate you coming tonight and presenting to us a summary of what's going on in the PEP grant.
All right.
That was a big deal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, we have an update on rigor. Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Francis, members of the Board, Dr. Garrett, staff and guests. We did receive some concerns at the last Board meeting and felt it was appropriate to begin showing the things that we're working on and understanding that we do have a lot yet to improve. We've made tremendous, tremendous growth and improvement over the last nine years. We were average by all accounts. When Dr. Garrett became the superintendent, we floated right around average test scores in the state. And eight years later, we have of 1,200 Title I schools, we have five in the top 10% and two in the top 1%. If Riverbend's free and reduced lunch rate was lower, then we would have had another one. And so, we just want to begin to share some of the things that we're working on. And certainly, our mission is good to great. It's not good to perfect, but we will continue to work to be as good as we can. And that measure of performance in our goal is overall... And that measure of performance in our goal is overall student success. We really believe that when you compare us to other school systems, that no one should have more success in all measurable categories. And we do need to improve with SAT and ACT, but when you look at math scores, reading scores, science scores, volleyball, bridge building, debate contests, and when you add them all up, no one should do better in more of those than we do. And we're not there, but we're doing very well, and we certainly, certainly want to get better. We will strive for that as long as we have breath to get better. But with that introduction, I'd like to introduce Cecilia Ruth Marcus, who will talk a little bit about some of the rigor that we have at the high school level.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, community members, thank you so much for having us this evening. Dr. Nolte asked me to come speak to you guys tonight about the rigor in our honors courses and our AP courses at Tuscola High School. And what I thought I'd start off first tonight is to talk about State Board Education Policy, GCSF 016, where the State Board says all students will graduate from a rigorous, relevant academic program that equips them with the knowledge, skills, and dispositions necessary to succeed in both post-secondary education and 21st century careers and to be participating, engaging citizens. Academic rigor is based on expectations established for students and staff that ensure that students demonstrate a thorough, in-depth mastery of challenging and complex curricular concepts. In every subject at every grade level, instruction and learning must include a commitment to knowledge core and the application of that knowledge core to solve complex, real-world problems. So, obviously, academic rigor is a key component to student success. Now, there are many honors classes that are offered at the high school level. So, how is a class considered honors? Well, those personnel who are teaching honors-level classes have to submit a portfolio, and these portfolios are currently housed at Central Office, and these portfolios have been reviewed to determine if the classes should be truly considered honors. So, let's discuss this portfolio process to determine how these courses are labeled honors. The State Board of Education has requested from DPI to develop and implement a review process in order to provide guidance to local educational agencies for effective implementation of honors-level courses. The honors-level course rubric and the honors implementation guide will serve as a framework to guide teachers, principals, and local educational agencies in developing and locally reviewing honors courses. The honors-level course review process occurs every three years. So, randomly selected local educational agencies will be notified at least one semester prior to review in order for effective collection of documentation and artifacts. The review process is intended to provide comments, feedback, and support to strengthen honors-level courses for continuous program improvement. So, what is the purpose of this rubric that I'm going to share with you? The purpose of this rubric is to clearly define what makes an honors-level course different from a standard-level course. The rubric assesses how curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices are adapted for advanced learners. It is designed to provide a consistent framework to guide teachers and principals as they develop, as they implement, and they evaluate local courses aligned to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, and of course, included with that is Common Core Curriculum and North Carolina Essential Standards. Locally-developed honors-level courses are subject to the honors-level course review process. So, reviewers and school personnel use these forms to ensure that all the necessary components of an honors-level course are met, and the intent is to provide a consistent tool for school personnel and reviewers to evaluate honors-level courses. So, you must say, "What do these forms look like?" Let me pass out this rubric to you, and then we'll discuss this rubric together. As you can see, the first component of this rubric is curriculum content. It's content-specific. So, how is the honors-level course adapted and differentiated for advanced learners? So, these portfolios should include how the curriculum should indicate depth, rigor, accelerated pacing, complexity, challenges, and creativity that's beyond the standard-level course. So, how does the honors-level curriculum support vertical alignment for career and college readiness? Well, there is evidence that extensions, acceleration, and enrichment are aligned with the standard course of study and Common Core. The second component on your rubric, as you can see, is instructional materials and methods. So, how is the honors-level course taught? There has to be evidence in that portfolio of appropriate differentiation in instructional practices for advanced learners. There's evidence of instructional diversity of teaching strategies indicating complexity above the standard-level course, which may include, but is not limited to, teacher as a facilitator, as a coach, as a role model, student-led learning and research, student exchange of ideas, project-based learning, problem-solving learning, seminar-style learning with a concentration of writing across all, integration of other content areas with connections to real-world skills and context, and the use of higher-level critical thinking skills. The third part of this rubric is assessment. How is this honors-level course assessed? Well, the portfolio has to prove that there's evidence there that assessment practices align with the honors-level curriculum and instructional best practices to include pre-assessments, formative and summative assessments, and that there is evidence of authentic assessments and ongoing student self- and peer assessment to adjust and improve learning. So, in essence, if this course has met these standards, then it is designated as an honors At Tuscola High School, and as a staff member of Tuscola High School, I can only speak for Tuscola. Before Tuscola, we have many honors courses that we offer to our students. We honor honors...we offer honors biology, earth and environmental science, advanced chemistry, Math II, Algebra II/Math III, discrete math, pre-calculus, Spanish II, III, and IV, French II, III, and IV, English I, II, III, and IV, Turning Points in American History and the United States and World Affairs since World War II. And online, we do offer an honors psychology class. So, once again, all of our honors portfolios and curriculum guides are currently housed at Central Office. These have been assessed to ensure that teachers who are teaching these honors courses are providing evidence that these courses are indeed rigorous and truly deemed honors. Now, advanced placement courses. The Advanced Placement is a program created by the College Board that offers college curriculum or college-level curriculum and examinations to high school students. American colleges often grant placement and course credit to students who obtain high scores above a certain number on the examinations. You might have heard them say, "Oh, I scored a three, or a four, or a five" on these AP exams. The AP curriculum for the various subjects is created for the College Board by a panel of experts and college-level educators in each subject. And for a high school course to have the AP designation, the course must be audited by the College Board to ascertain if it satisfies the AP curriculum. So, if the course is approved by the school, then the school can use the AP designation, and then it's publicly listed on the AP ledger as a College Board-approved AP course. So, these courses that are offered by our schools that have the AP distinction have been audited, and this audit was created at the request of both secondary schools and college and universities, who wanted College Board to provide AP teachers and administrators with clear guidelines on curricular and resource requirements that must be in place for AP courses, to give colleges and universities confidence that AP courses are designed to meet the same clearly articulated college-level criteria across all high schools across the country. And so, all schools that are wishing to label a course AP must submit the subject-specific AP course audit form and the course syllabus for each teacher that does teach that AP course. So, your question might be, "Well, why do teachers need to submit the AP course audit form and syllabus?" Well, the audit at the heart is a way of achieving a mutual understanding between those leading the course, the AP teachers, their principals, and colleges and universities who gain access to a ledger of those courses to use that AP designation. So, in order to ensure that each and every teacher demonstrates their awareness and inclusion of the curricular requirements in the course, the College Board requires that all teachers submit the same type of materials for review. So, what does the authorization actually entail? Well, if you use or you want that AP designation for your course, that indicates that College Boards has the permission to use that designation on our students' transcripts, on our school's course catalog, and on our school's websites. So, the course will be listed as an authorized AP course in a ledger available to all the colleges and universities across the country each fall, and it's made public to...or it...well, it is. It's made available to the public via the Internet. Some of the AP courses that we do offer at Tuscola, face-to-face, we offer AP Biology, Statistics, Calculus, U.S. History, Language and Composition, Literature Composition, and Earth and Environmental Science. We offer even more online AP courses that are taught through the North Carolina Virtual Public Schools: Art History, Human Geography, Government and Politics, Physics, Psychology, Music Theory, Spanish, Latin, Chinese, Computer Science, European History, French Language and Culture, and German Language and Culture. So, hopefully, through our discussion tonight, you can see exactly how these courses are determined and labeled as honors and AP. And any questions that you guys might have about our honors and AP courses can be found in this packet of information that I'm going to share with you. This packet of information was compiled by our administration at Tuscola High School as well as by Central Office staff. This packet of information does address our honors and AP courses that are offered at Tuscola, as well as pertinent information regarding the subject of higher-level courses and other relevant topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus, for sharing some of the things we're doing for high school rigor. Certainly, we want to do more, and we will continue to work to that end. At this time, I'd like to introduce Meg Reeves and Trevor Putnam to talk about our English One pilot that, if successful, should expand to other middle schools.
Me and Ms. Reeves drew straws to see who'd had to take this part. She won. So, that's why I'm here. We are piloting in the first year English One at Waynesville Middle School. We appreciate the opportunity that Dr. Nolte and Dr. Garrett and the board has provided to allow us to do that. See if I can operate this thing. There's lots of research, and I'm not going to stand up here in the interest of time. All of you have been provided with this research. If you'll click to the next slide. We did realize that a systematic approach was needed, much like we had for Algebra One for many years. We've done that, done that very well, but we felt like we needed that also for English Language Arts. And so, we looked at the research. Mr. Schmatters will appreciate. We looked at Duke a little bit, so...and if you'll just keep popping them up there. This is some of the data and information that we used in forming this. You'll go to the next one. Differentiation for the gifted and talented based on student profile and readiness. Again, some more research that we looked up. Curriculum compacting streamlines and modifies the grade-level curriculum by eliminating material that's been previously mastered. All of y'all can take a look at that. This is a really good book, A Nation Deceived: How Schools Hold Back America's Brightest Students, the Templeton Report, and some of the quotes that we pulled out of this. If you'll just keep clicking. We conferred with peers, networked with other counties. Rutherford County is the nearest and somewhat similar in demographics to us, and we looked at some of the things they were doing. Then, we attended the middle school conference. Jennifer Rochette and some of the things she pointed out at the middle school conference. But here's the big one, EVOs data. And looking at our...that was too quick. And looking at our EVOs data, we see that in 2011, 2012, our gifted ELA students lost ground in sixth and seventh grade. A sixth-grade gain was negative 1.9, seventh-grade gain was negative 2.5. Using EVOs data and looking at ELA results from 2011, '12, we see their overall student population also lost ground in sixth and seventh grade. In sixth, it was negative 2.5, and in seventh grade, it's negative 4.3. So, we saw from this, we had considerable measures and considerable gains we needed to make. If you'll go to the next one. Using a lens dedicated to mastery rather than exposure, we then used our EVOs data to examine the achievement probability for EOC, English One, for current seventh graders. We found that 66 seventh-grade students are projected to pass the English One EOC with 90 to 99% achievement probability. Forty-six of these 66 are projected to make Level Four with an 80 to 99% achievement probability, and of these 46 students, 41 were AIG in reading. Again, using EVOs data, we looked at the achievement probability for our current seventh graders. 96 sixth graders are projected to pass English One EOC with 90 to 99% achievement probability. Forty-four of these 96 students are projected to make Level Four within an 80 to 99% achievement probability, and of these 44 students, 37 are AIG in reading and 2 are AIG in math only. The plan. Ms. Reeves, I've done a lot of talking. Do you want to come up and talk about the plan?
Sure. We're on the path to the plan. So, we have screened all of our students this year in every grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we've given them a screener in language arts and in math, and that told us a little bit about where they needed to go and what kind of classes they need to be in. We then double-checked, double-checked this education value-added assessment system to look and see if what they were telling us, what the predictions were, were matching what we were seeing, and it did. We felt very good about that. So, we've screened all sixth-grade students in language arts. We have class offerings for accelerated language arts and class offerings for regular language arts in sixth grade, seventh grade, and in eighth grade. We have English One for the first time, two classes of that, and then we have just...we have regular English in eighth grade. And we also have in our jumpstart, our 30-minute period of time in the first part of the day, which we're very excited about that, we offer some assistance to students who do not do quite as well. So, we have a very targeted, strategic plan for those students. For the math, we've got it going in math, too. In math, we screened for that, and in sixth grade, in jumpstart, we are pulling out our higher math kids so that they can get a little extra dose there in sixth grade. And what we found out for both... And what we found out for both subjects is that we wanted to have a very progressive and fluid approach to both subjects. We didn't want to put our students in regular math in the seventh grade, then all of a sudden they go into Algebra One. So we wanted to make sure we had a transitory program there, and we feel like we've done that. So in sixth grade, rather than having an accelerated math class, we worry a little bit about our rigor, that it's not too rigorous sometimes, because we've got 11- and 12-year-old students, they come to the middle school, and all of a sudden, we've got them popped in these pretty tough classes. So we did start with just jump start for math in sixth grade. Then we screen every year, and we'll screen them at the end of this year in sixth and in seventh. And if the data shows us that they go to the accelerated class again, then that's where they're end up. If the data shows us that maybe they don't need to, or maybe they weren't in it this year, and all of a sudden, they need to go into accelerated class, that's what will happen. So we'll be looking at that every year. In math, I told you, offerings for language in math, we have the sixth-grade jump start accelerated, then we have the rest, we have regular math classes. In seventh grade, we have accelerated math, and we have connected math. In the accelerated math, we are blending, I hesitate to say, two-years' worth of math because that scares everyone. We are not taking two-years and putting it into one. We are actually looking at exactly what is taught in both grade levels and making sure that we are not re-teaching again something they already know just because it's in the curriculum. So we're really looking closely at that, and we're sending those kids, we've got that, that's going very well in the seventh grade. And then at the end of seventh grade, we will screen them again, and some of those students will then go to Algebra One, and the rest of the students will go to connected math. And we feel great about our connected math program, we're offering that in all three grade levels, and I feel that it's very rigorous. You, Mr. Putnam?
Absolutely.
Okay.
A little bit about connected math. It's inquiry-based, it's a little bit different than the way I was taught in school, where you present information, the student receives it, tries to retain it, and then recall it and apply it in a standard math problem. It's inquiry-based, they're presented, they're with a problem, much like the real world. And I like, I always use this example when I'm talking to teachers, parents, and students. It'd be the equivalent of riding down the road, and you have a flat tire. Well, in the old way of teaching math, the teacher pops out of the car and says, "You have a flat tire due to loss of air pressure. Here's how you change the tire, and get the tire changed to flatten the tire again." That's currently the way we do it. We show it, demonstrate it, and they practice it, and then that's the way we expect them to learn. But the real world is, we're driving down the road, we get a flat tire, we don't know really how to fix the tire. So we're going to have to begin to assimilate information, assimilate data, what we know about things to solve our problem, our dilemma. And that's kind of the way connected math works. It's inquiry-based, it's true to life and the way we learned in the 21st century. We feel like that's very rigorous. Have you left me up here? Is that in here? I should have kept my mouth shut. Now she's going to make me.
All right, so if you can click to the next one, click through that, that's the high school guidelines. Considerations, mastery versus exposure. Again, we don't want to set kids up for failure. We're not about exposing, we're about mastery, learning these concepts. The vertical implications it has for our high school, we've had many talks with Tuscola High School, they've been very receptive and helpful. Scheduling, we ended up going to a bell schedule as a result of that. It helped us eliminate some social barriers created by the teams, and it allowed us to better provide what everybody needed on their academic levels. So we went to the bell schedule, and we're in departments and not in teams in eighth grade. The old junior high. The old junior high. Reduction of student choices at the high school level. We had to consider, you know, what are they going to have at the high school, and the high schools come through in flying colors. Open sections created, we felt like that was a plus. We're able to offer some at the middle school, and that just frees up some spots for them at the high school. Student maturity, parental support, administrative support, acquisition of materials, qualified staff, additional high school classes. So all those are things we had to consider. In other words, we ate a can of worms. We had to make sure we knew what we were doing. If you'll go to the next one. Our plan to create, or to accelerate the ELA curriculum in sixth and seventh grade and offer English One in eighth grade was presented to the associate superintendent, superintendent, and secondary supervisor for approval. All in attendance were in agreement with the plan, and so we began those talks with Tuscola High School, and away we went. And we feel like it's up and running and going well. Some steps that we took, all Waynesville Middle School staff was made aware of the plan through grade-level meetings. A stringent placement was agreed upon by both WMS and Tuscola. Meetings were held with the high school to ensure vertical alignment. A letter explaining the plan was sent home to parents. WMS LA instructional coach created a summer reading list that we sent home with students. Staff was selected by considering teacher strengths and dispositions. Common course strands were analyzed, and enrichment activities and texts were provided to WMS staff. Money was budgeted for appropriate materials. Schedule was built to accommodate curriculum changes. A decision was made to have two English One teachers so that they could commonly collaborate and create fidelity in the implementation of English One. And we recently had some talks with the high school about what this looks like at other schools, so. Any questions the board might have? That was a lot, that's intended to be about a 20-minute presentation, and we really went to...
Ms. Chair?
A lot of information here. And I'd like to see if we could get this posted to our website so that we could study and get more questions. I mean, it'd be nice to have some of this information to lift over before our meeting, and I, honestly, it's that we could ask a good question, could we? And this is just the first time we've saw it, too. So I'd see if we can either get that posted to our website.
And we'd invite you to come to the school. That'd be great. We love to have y'all come visit our schools. We're very proud of what we're doing. So anytime, we'd welcome the board to come and visit us, and we'll sit down with you. You can go in, see the classes, see the kids. That's the good stuff, so.
And just your yellow folder, the very first piece of information you've got is the syllabus and the root tree.
Yes, ma'am.
And I highlighted for you a link there to a blog.
Okay.
It's the English One blog, our teachers have started. It's pretty cool, which in infancy is, I think they've just, they've really gotten that going in the last week or so. So if you look at that, I think you'll enjoy reading. And then the syllabus, you can see some of those things maybe don't look familiar, or some of them look like something you might have read way up in high school. And then also, there's some, just some parent letters we sent home. We did try to start back, we started in about March, talking to kids and parents, and Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte and Mr. McDonald and all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Waynesville Middle, and please know that we are looking at other areas, and, but we want to do things in a very thoughtful and methodical way and not just have a knee-jerk response. This work took months, and as we move forward, it'll take months to do other things effectively. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sally Hunley from Bethel Middle School.
You can tell I'm a classroom teacher when I show up with a basket of stuff. And no, those aren't papers that I'm going to ask you to grade while I talk. I am so privileged to stand before you and talk about STEM and just get a chance to brag on my kids, the things that you have going on. We've had such great PowerPoints with so much information on them, but what I want you to see are really kids at work and what they're really doing in action. In order to tell you a little bit about STEM, I need to give you just a bit about my own background. A few years ago, many years ago, several years ago, a lot of years ago, I graduated from the School of Science and Math in Durham. Go unicorns, we've got some other unicorns in the room. Yes, that's our school mascot. But it became very important to me as a child of the mountains, not Haywood County, but a child of the mountains, who went away to that school and felt like I didn't have all the opportunities that everyone else in the state had had to come back and say, "We're going to bring those back here." And so, the opportunity to really bring STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics to Haywood County, lights me up. I get so excited. In fact, my 13-year-old daughter said to me, "Mom, will you please just try to tone down the cheesiness when you talk to them?" And I said, "I really don't have that ability, so I apologize ahead of time." In order to understand STEM, what you really have to understand is that it is 21st-century learning. I have put, you've got a rainbow set of packets that comes from me, that goes with that cheesiness factor, and in it is a form that tells you, here's what a 20th-century classroom looks like, here's what a 21st-century classroom looks like. And I strive to really get that 21st-century classroom, especially because this is my 21st-year teaching right here in Haywood County schools, and I'm so darn proud of the fact that I've been able to be here so long. I love this school system. In order to understand the STEM the way that I do it, you need to know what I teach. Half of the time, I teach Math Fusion, which is a remedial course for kids who struggle in math, and we have a blast, and we do a whole lot of math in there. I also spend half of my time then teaching science, technology, engineering, and math, and people think, "Oh, well, you teach one set of kids, and then you teach the other set of kids." That's not the way it is. I have the same kids sometimes in Math Fusion that I also have in STEM. So within one classroom, I have kids who are struggling with math and kids who are gifted in math, and it's a beautiful thing to watch magic happen. So, when I put together academic rigor, and I really started thinking about what does that look like for STEM, I came up with three things that matter the most. The first one is that it must be a student-centered classroom, very, very important that the students are doing the work. In fact, the National Science Teachers Association says to us that it must be active learning by students 80% of the time. So my professional development plan this year is that my kids will be minds-on, engaged 80% of the time, and it is difficult, because that means that what I'm doing right now would go against all my minutes. Okay? The other thing that they tell us is that it cannot simply be projects, it has to be truly engaging, challenging activities. So I want to take just a minute to show you one. My sixth, seventh, and eighth graders work with programming, and they work with Lego Robotics because it's a visual programming function, which is way beyond the programming that I had to learn, which was that DOS-based stuff. So we get visual programming. It's cutting-edge, and I've had folks who have said to me, "I will happily hire your kids because they know what they're doing once they graduate from high school." So I just wanted to show you. Now, usually, they're doing an obstacle course, but they just wanted to give you guys some bells and whistles. They thought you'd appreciate some bells and whistles. If you couldn't hear it, the last thing that they programmed was for the robot to snore, and if I talk for too long, they make that happen. The robot starts snoring. It's not good for my ego. One of my kids, it came as a great surprise to me when one of my kids looked at me and said, "Ms. Hunley, you know you're not very hands-on." And I said, "I'm not?" And she said, "No, you make us do all the work. You'll never put your hands on anything." And I said, "Okay, good, I'm doing it right then, because you're the ones doing all the work." The second part, so the first part then is how important it is that the students are engaged. The second part is that I have to give my students opportunity for productive frustration. In your packet, there is an article that talks about academic rigor and how we can bring rigor to all of our students, but we have to be very aware of how we do it. It's very, very important that we do not cause destructive frustration, but we are bringing productive frustration to our students. And what that means to me is that I give my students an opportunity to fail, and I know that sounds awful coming from me, but they have to have the opportunity to make mistakes, fall flat on their faces, pick themselves back up, and do it all over again. I have very, very supportive administrators, and I'm very blessed by the administration that I have. So they give me the time and the flexibility to look at kids and say, "Okay, you designed that. It didn't work. Figure out what you're going to do now," instead of having to rush on to the next thing. It's really important that I tell you that this idea of frustration does not mean, and academic rigor does not mean that there are more failures. In fact, I think if we have more Fs, we are doing the failing. It's very important that our kids are successful even when they're failing. So I want to show you one of the things that I gave. And I really thought the kids were going to run me out of town by the time they finished this one. NASA uses solar power cells to make their spacecraft move through space. And the kids were like, "Okay, that's fine and dandy, Ms. Hunley, so what are you going to make us do with this?" And so, the challenge that I gave them was they had to work together to make a mast that was structurally sound but portable, because it had to fit on spacecraft. This is what they finally came up with, but there was a lot of wailing and gnashing of teeth along the way. So here, they were very smart, they figured out architecturally that trusses were the way to go, and they used these diagonals that allowed this to happen. I just think this is super cool. You can, we can put a lot of pressure there, in fact, it'll hold up textbooks if we put it there. But it fully collapses down to fit onto their spacecraft. Now, one of the things that I thought was really cool to watch was the more frustrated they got, the less they came to me. But they would start going to each other. They would see, "Ooh, that person looks like she knows what she's doing. I'm going to her." And what we have to teach, when we're talking about rigor, when we're talking about STEM, you know, if we're talking engineering and mathematics and science and technology, our kids cannot become dependent on their teacher. We won't be with them. We won't be there to change the tire. Thank goodness I'm not the one there to change the tire. But we won't be there to do those things. They need to know how to think and how to do it themselves. And so, when they start looking at each other and they're like, "Ms. Hunley, we don't know that you know what you're doing. I'm going over here to this person I know does. I'm excited." That's when I get on fire. So, first leg of the tripod, student engagement. Second leg of the tripod is how important it is that we give them time for frustration and give them time to fix their frustration, to stomp their foot and roll their eyes and huff, remember, I'm middle school. The third part is that we must give them real challenges. And yes, I'm a mom of middle school students, they won't take my class, but I am a mom of middle school students. And one of the things I have in there is that it's really in your packets, is that it's very important that we do not give more difficult or simply give more work and call it academic rigor. We've got to find things that are true challenges, and by that, I do not mean projects, I mean real, challenging things for them to do. So within your packets is the one that when I talked to my students and said, "What should I make the board look at?" They said, "Oh, Ms. Hunley, make them do the astronaut pudding problem." So I won't make you do it right now. However, I'll give you some background on this problem. You see, NASA will not send fresh milk into space, but as an astronaut, you want pudding. You're dying for it. If you're on the space station for years, you're going to really want some pudding. And what you have to figure out is how to make one serving of pudding. Now, when you look at that, what you're going to see is that in order to do it, you have to understand volume, and these are sixth graders, they've just learned really the rational numbers. So they have to understand volume, they have to understand mass, they have to work with decimals and fractions, and they are weird fractions, too. Decimals and fractions, they have to use the metric system and the American Standard System all at the same time. And when they become stuck, I'll then say, "Okay, here's a quick mini lesson on how you divide a fraction." Or, "Here's a quick mini lesson on why we use this crazy American Standard System." For my students, their reward is they get to eat pudding at the end. I'm going to let you guys decide what your own personal reward will be, but do reward yourselves. That's a hard problem, okay? So the three things... So the three things, student engagement, productive frustration, and challenge, real, heartfelt challenge, where they're not sure they're going to be successful, but they keep on working at it. Those three things are what I believe make it a place that I love to be every single day. And it's with those things that I'm really surprised by what I'm about to tell you. It truly amazes me that in the three semesters we have offered this course at Bethel, our enrollment in it has grown 140%. We have more than doubled our enrollment in this class. By the end of this school year, I will have taught 175 students in this STEM class. We have a waiting list at this point, because our kids are dying to get in it. Of that 60% of our Bethel student body will take a STEM class. Now, I quickly let them know that makes them nerds, along with me. Another thing that I am just super proud of is that 40% of the students who take my class are female. Nationally, when we look at STEM classes that are elective, the number is 12.5%, 40%. And when my girls programmed that robot, they said, "You better tell them girls programmed it." I am amazed, truly amazed by what, oh, one other thing that I need to let you know is that it's a semester-long class, and our students have gone to the principals, both Mr. Hines, Ms. Paris, and asked, "Make this a year-long class. Let us have it longer." That's just crazy. I'm amazed by what they accomplish, and I openly invite any of you into our classrooms. Parents, I'd love to see you guys show up, because I really always can use extra hands. Please, please come help me. As the kids are very quick to point out, I will not make you do any work when you come in the room, because they're the ones that have to do all the work anyway. I thank you for your time. I thank you very much for your support of Haywood County Schools. Thank you for all that you do. It is a fantastic place to live. I thank you for talking about rigor. I'm very excited that we're having this conversation, and if you have any questions, I would be very happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Board, I think we sent to you last week a copy of the professional development that we did on October the 7th, and that included several sessions related to STEM education, so we can share that information with other teachers, and they can begin to do as good a job as Ms. Hunley in that area. Ms. Boswell from Kent Middle School is going to talk about math compacting, and looks like Academic Rigor in math and ELAs. Maybe she's going to talk about more than what I asked, which is fine.
Chairman Francis and Board members, thank you for inviting me tonight, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. I was actually going to speak about our advanced ELA courses that we're offering, as well as math compacting, but I'm going to make it really short. But just so you get the gist of it, piggybacking on what Mr. Putnam had said about EVOs data, what we found at Kent Middle School was, from our test data, was that our high-flying students, our AIG students, their growth was lacking in language arts. So we had to develop the plan, and our AIG program had been offered as an elective through our students' wheel classes. And we found that in middle school, it seemed like half of our students, when they came into wheel, they actually wanted classes, other classes, like chorus, band, and art. So we were trying to think of ways that we could get those AIG courses offered into the core classes. So we were fortunate enough to get our halftime AIG position full-time, and now we are offering sixth-grade advanced language arts, seventh-grade advanced language arts in core classes rather than as an elective. We also have our seventh grade, our AIG teacher working in a seventh-grade inclusion class as well with our high-flying students. So in that way, we are able to reach more of our higher students, so. We are also, we offer Math 1 in two classes, and we are very fortunate this year to be able to offer Math 1 to our seventh-grade students. We have a select group of seventh-grade students, and this, the whole process started actually in sixth grade, when we invited 14 students to take a class that would help prepare them for Math 1. Out of the 14 that we invited, 10 actually wanted to participate in the class. These students, on top of their sixth-grade core class, actually opted to take a 70-minute advanced math class, opting out of their wheel classes, to participate in this, a compacting of seventh-grade math and pre-algebra, so to prepare them for Math 1. Of the 10 that participated, we felt like six were prepared to do that. So we have six students in Math 1 this year, and that's something that we've never done. So we're very proud of the fact that we're able to offer that for our students this year. So, and, but in eighth grade, we didn't find that we, that our AIG students, our high students, were lacking in math and language arts, so we decided to keep that in the wheel rotation. So, and that's what we've decided to do. We're very happy with what we're offered to, what we're able to offer our students. So, thank you very much. If there are any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much for inviting me.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Board members, you may have seen a brochure at your seats that looks like this. This is a summary of the new, more rigorous high school math coursework, Math 1, 2, and 3, and so that's what that is, and Ms. Boswell was referring to that. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ron Moss, our elementary supervisor, to talk about rigor at the elementary level.
Chairman Francis, Board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, I am probably going to be redundant in a lot of what I say, because there are people that have really explained succinctly rigor, but I did start my presentation off with kind of an overview of what rigor is. I think people tend to think that it means harder, more difficult, and it's not that. William Schmidt, the, one of the professors at Michigan State University, says that rigor is a focused, coherent, and appropriately challenging curriculum. And basically, a rigorous curriculum has four components: clear and concise learning objectives, assessment that matches those learning objectives, and as Mrs. Hunley said in her presentation, a high degree of student engagement, students are responsible for their learning, they take an active role in their learning, and the implementation on the part of teachers of high-impact instructional strategies that do help students to learn. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what a rigorous curriculum entails. Did a bulleted list here, and everybody has said this, you know, what is rigorous teaching and learning? First and foremost, it's a belief that all students can learn. Educators need to have that belief, and Sally said something earlier, too, about students she works with being needy in one area, but very gifted in another, and I think we have to understand that a student's intelligence is not something that's static. It can change. And based on interest and whatever, they can excel in one area and maybe struggle in another. No. Do I need my clicker? Okay, the other thing that's important here in terms of the teachers is that educators are holding themselves to high expectations for continually improving their practice so that there's quality teaching and learning going on in the classroom, that we're engaged in ongoing collaborative planning. Teachers used to work in isolated boxes in classrooms and never talk to each other, and now we are, and at the elementary level, I know we do a good job of collaboration among teachers. And the last bullet here speaks to the collection of data. I know for a fact that at the elementary level, everything we do is data-driven, and data is looked at continually for each and every student in every school, and teachers are making instructional decisions based on the data that they receive. A rigorous teaching, rigorous teaching and learning, everybody has talked about critical thinking. We need to be teaching kids how to think logically, analyze and compare, and I'm going to show some question types that would be asked today compared to questions that would have been asked 10 years ago with students, and we're going to see, you know, this ability or the need to be able to analyze and compare, and we need to have students question and evaluate. At the elementary level, I can tell you, we really believe in research-based instructional practices. A lot of the curriculum framework that we have in place, that we have implemented, are research-based programs that guide the learning and the teaching that goes on in the classroom. And, you know, we do, Sally was talking about kids working together, kids need to be interacting with the teacher, interacting with the content, and they need to be interacting with each other. And then, lastly, and very importantly, and we are really in the beginning stages of doing this in a lot of schools, developing meaningful, well-operated, professional learning communities whereby people are sharing ideas, doing book studies, looking at student data, and determining ways to work with specific students, you know, who need, who have special needs, who are average, and those who are needing to be accelerated. How does this relate to our district's elementary schools? I'm going to be honest, I taught in two school districts before I came here, and I'm going to be very honest, I'm very proud to be a Haywood County employee. I live in Jackson County, and I'm glad to be working here. But I will say, in my experience-
Oh, it's on videotape.
Yes.
This is on videotape, so be careful.
I came here, and I'm going to say, I came here from Miami. I felt like, you know, this was a very, back in '96, a very cutting-edge school district. You know, the kinds of staff development that were being offered here, you know, in an area like this, to me, was phenomenal. And I know that early on, at every school, we struggled with, you know, doing more for our kids in terms of reading and math instruction, and, you know, so forth and so on. And in 2005, there really began a push here based on research to implement in every classroom, a balanced literacy approach to teaching reading with the comprehension toolkit as the framework for that instruction. And basically, I tried to be very concise in what I wanted to say, so I'm going to read this. Basically, in our classrooms, reading skills are taught within the context of teaching children how to use comprehension strategies to analyze and interpret text. So no more in a classroom do we do whole-group reading instruction, where we do round robin reading, and a teacher is asking literal and inferential comprehension questions. Kids are really interacting with the text, they're keeping track of their thinking, they're really engaged with what they're doing in the reading. And since 2008, I went back and looked at the NC report card, the NC Schools Report Card this weekend, our reading scores have grown on average of 18.2%. So I go back to 2007, 2008, and then I look at the data that we got in the most current testing cycle, which was year before last, and if we look at our third grade in 2007, 2008, we had 59.4% of our students proficient in reading. That meant they were on grade level or above. And the last testing cycle, we had 78.5% of our third graders at grade level or above. Can that be better? Yes, and I think we're working very hard, you know, to make that happen. You can see in fourth grade, 63.6%, in 2008, in 2012, 84.1%, and in grades five in 2008, 67.9%, and year before last, 82.9%. Those are huge gains. Next slide. Okay, I wanted to kind of give an idea of how reading looks different, so this is an example in the grade test question from 2009. A child would read a passage, the word "alighting" would be in the passage, and using context clues from the passage, they would have to determine the meaning of the word, okay? This is what they would be asked to do now. And I'm going to read the passage so we kind of get an idea of how this would work. The student's going to be reading the passage, and then they're going to answer the question. It says, "My grandma pulled the ball out, unwrapped it, and held it out for us to see. The ball was scarred almost beyond recognition. It had dog bite marks, dirt scuffs, and framed seams. Right in the middle was a big signature in black ink that I had somehow overlooked. It was smudged and now faded, but it clearly said Babe Ruth. I began to shake." Okay, just like in the old question type, the child is going to be asked to determine what the word "scarred" means. But now, they're going to go back to the passage and find two phrases that show where they got the idea for the meaning of that word. So in essence, they're having to do more than just maybe take an educated guess or guess at something, they're having to go back and prove an answer, okay? In math, how does this relate to what we've been doing in math? In 2007, our district partnered with Meredith College, and kind of in sync with them was the University of Chapel Hill, NC State University, but Meredith was the driving force in the research and development that had helped develop what they called the Partners in Mathematics Learning. And the whole idea of this initiative was to help teachers move away from teaching solely procedural and algorithmic-type math, and provide students opportunities to conceptually understand what they were learning before they began to apply it to algorithms. So in essence, what you're doing is you're trying to build a greater understanding of number sense, so that when you apply it to an algorithm or procedure, kids understand what's happening with the math. And I want to say, this was six years before the implementation of Common Core, so we were well ahead of the curve, and the Common Core standards dictate that that's how we're teaching math now. You know, last year, our district adopted the Investigations Math Curriculum, which is the framework for our math instruction, and again, it provides opportunities. If you walk into any math classroom in our district, you're going to see going on in the math class what you saw going on in Sally Hunley's STEM class. Kids are talking about math, they're talking about how they solve problems. They're, the math classroom looks completely different than it did five, 10 years ago. And I think that when we look at where we were and where we are, you know, our data shows that what we're doing is working. So if we go back and look at scores in 2008, we had 76.5% of our third graders proficient in math. That means they were at or above grade level. On the test we gave year before last, we had 92.4% of our kids at or above grade level. In fourth grade, that, in 2008, 79.6%, year before last, 93.9% of our kids were proficient. And in fifth grade in 2008, we had 74.4%, and we had 91.6%. In essence, that is a 15.8% growth in our math scores, what's that, six years? Over a six-year period. So, next slide. Instead of this, this is what we see traditionally in a math classroom, children are taught the algorithm, and I'm going to, wait, go back. I'm going to say, as a fourth-grade teacher, when I would teach my kids how to mark out the nine, the number in the ones place, and hold the second product with the zero, you were continually beating your head against the wall, because kids did not under, I mean, that's a step they have to remember. But by doing the things, don't move yet, in the next slide, kids understood the place value of these numbers, so when you taught them the algorithm, they ought, I didn't have to teach them where to put a zero. have to teach them where to put a zero, they figured it out on their own. So instead of kids doing this, okay, this is what they're going to do. And I want to explain the table before I read the problem. Okay, if you take method W, which is, in a fourth-grade classroom, we would call that partial products, or in reality, it's the distributive property, what we are doing is we are laying the basic foundation for algebraic understanding in high school, because the distributive property is a huge part of what goes on. Method Z is an array model of multiplying, which, from my experience, when you did teach area, kids already understood it, because they had already applied it here. So in essence, when we think about the thinking skills that need to be a part of a rigorous curriculum, we think about analyze and compare. And that's what this question is asking kids to do. So I'm going to read the question. Pablo solved the multiplication problem using two different methods. He made a mistake in either method W or method Z. So in method W, he's using the distributive property, he's breaking apart the numbers by place value, getting partial products and adding. And in method Z, he's using the area model. Now, what the student has to do is not what is traditional, which was what I showed before, they are having to identify the method where Pablo made the mistake, and then explain to Pablo what he needs to do to correct his answer. So that takes the understanding much deeper than just being able to solve a procedure or an algorithm. Does that make sense? Okay. Next. Okay. What has this meant for our district at the elementary level? In 2011, Riverbend Elementary School was named a National Blue Ribbon School. Last year, Bethel Elementary was named a National Title I Distinguished School. This year, Jonathan Valley is a finalist for the National Title, Title I Distinguished School. And last year, based on performance, we had five schools that were named reward schools, Bethel Elementary, Central Elementary, Hazelwood Elementary, Jonathan Valley, and Meadowbrook. So I feel like at the elementary level, we are doing a good job to prepare our students to be successful students and adults in the world they're going to live in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, Dr. Garrett, that took a while, but we thank you for the opportunity to talk about that. Just a couple thoughts before we move on. We want you to know, as a board and the community, that there are lots of reasons why we should not be doing as well as we're doing. We've lost $5 million and over 120 people in the last five years, and we did not use that as an excuse. We did tell people that that happened because it's real. And I can name the people who are no longer with us in the positions that haven't been filled. We, you know, we don't like excuses, and we commit to get better and to get stronger. But if we're going to do that, we'll need a lot of support, and we'll need an environment where we at least stabilize, instead of continuing to lose. But please, please know that we'll be glad to share more with you. Certainly, we're always open to new ideas and learning more. The thing that I'm most proud of is probably, for the first time in a public setting, we've really been able to explain the difference between what school is now and what it was just three or four years ago. It is very different. We started using the assessment measures for kindergarten, first and second grade, two years before the state started requiring them. And we started screening kindergarten children, so we could serve them early on, instead of having them play way before the rest of the state. And again, we're not finished, but we appreciate this opportunity and commit to continuing to work very hard to do a better job for our children.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte, and thank you, Dr. Garrett, for that update on the rigor. I think it's a good suggestion that some of the information is shared on our website, if possible, if we can do that. And maybe continue the discussion in another forum. I appreciate everybody's coming tonight. We're going to now go into our closed session that we normally have prior to our meeting, but we wanted to honor our principals and take time to visit with you tonight. And thank you for the job that you do for us every day, in the classroom, in the hallway, in the lunchroom, on the bus lot, you name it. I know that y'all are fully engaged in the education of our kids at all of our locations. So thank you very much, and we appreciate the fact that it's National Principal Month, and we want to know that you are appreciated, and we appreciate the hard work that you do. Board members, at this time, I would ask that we entertain a motion that would go into closed session.
Motion.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Hinson, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We'll go. Call the meeting back to order. We'll start back on our agenda. Well, members, you've had an opportunity to look at the September 10th and September 17th closing regular session minutes. I would entertain a motion to be approved at this time. Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion to approve them. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hinson. Any questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Board members, at the North Carolina School Board Association, we have the opportunity to have, I believe it's four voting delegates, based on the ADM for Haywood County Schools. Is there anybody that would volunteer to serve as a voting delegate to the Delegate Assembly in Greensboro? We need four.
Now, are you already, are you already?
I'm an officer, so I won't be included in that.
In that, so, okay.
As past president, I think I actually run the nominations of the meeting, so.
Right, okay.
Mr. Leatherwood, offer to be at the legislates, Ms. Milner?
I'll do it.
Anybody? Mr. Hinson?
I'll do it.
Ms. Ronan? Okay.
I make a motion, we, all four of the board members that raised their hands, to be the-
Voting delegates for the North Carolina School Board Association, be Mr. Leatherwood, Ms. Shandival, Mr. Hinson, and Ms. Milner. Are there any, oh, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
All second.
Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Board members, you have had a request from the North Carolina School Board's Action Center to participate, based on our ADM at the level of $3,000, to lobby on behalf of school boards. What would be your wishes on this action or request?
Goodness, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we support this committee. I believe that we, that Lynn either volunteered or y'all voted her in to represent Haywood County on this endeavor. So I make a motion that we support this.
Okay. When you asked me about that, I told you wrong, Mr. Leatherwood. She's not on the Action Center, I'm sorry. Okay. I misunderstood what you asked me earlier this evening. I want to clear that up.
Will I still make the motion?
You still want to make a motion? Okay. Now, I hear a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second to the motion. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair, I was going to let you know that due to the letter that was submitted, the email that was submitted to the board member previously discussing businesses, therefore, I'm going to, I'll vote against this measure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think that there's been some issues that've come up recently, and I feel like it would be best served for the board to maybe table this one more, at least one more month, and maybe clear up a few of the items, and give a little bit more confirmation on some of the emails and things that have been sent out.
Okay.
And that would give us a little bit more time to study the matter. So I know there's a motion on the floor.
Well, what we could do is if the majority of the board wants to study it for another 30 days, which that won't matter, I mean, we'll still be meeting prior to the School Board Association meeting, and we could even vote on it even into December, as far as that goes. The question is, is if you want to do it now, or you want to table it for 30 days? And if you want to table it for 30 days, then vote against a motion that's on the floor. Okay? If you want to go forward with it now, vote for it tonight, just go ahead and vote for it. So that, that'll make it pretty clear. And if it dies tonight, we can put it back on the agenda for next, next meeting, if that would be what you'd want to do.
Please clarify that for me, Mr. Chairman. I quite understand what you're saying.
Okay, what I'm saying is-
He made the motion, you're second, that motion, on the way you can vote to table is, Ms. Leatherwood?
Well, just to defeat the motion's what I'm saying.
Right.
And then we'll discuss the other part of that.
Okay, okay.
We're not doing two for one.
Okay, okay.
It's one step at a time. So there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Leatherwood to approve it, second of Ms. Shandival. And any other questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we've got two for, all against? Okay, we have five against. Okay, now, if you want to take action as a board to table it for 30 days, then we can do that at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this for 30 days and get a little bit more clarification on a few things.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to table this until the next board meeting, basically 30 days.
Right.
Or the next board meeting, whichever comes first. It'll be table to the next board meeting.
Right, yes, sir.
That'd be better to clarify. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Second, Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor of tableing it, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, five to. So the motion will be tabled until the next board meeting. Board members, we have an opportunity to appoint one of our board members to safety schools advisory council. At this time, I would take any suggestions or volunteers?
Mr. Morris, didn't you serve on this before?
Yes, sir.
How many are we reporting? One, two?
I think it's one, is it? No?
Would you want to serve?
Would you want to serve on it again?
Yes, ma'am. When's our next meeting? When's our next meeting?
One.
May I check the calendar, please?
Sure.
Well, you can, they have more than one meeting, don't they?
Yeah, but if I'd like, if I want to serve, I'd like to make it. Morris, two. We're already, oh, wow. I've got a volleyball game at Franklin. If you can hand me out by four o'clock, we'll be good.
I make a motion that we, I make a motion that we nominate Mr. Bob Morris to be on the Safety School Advisory Council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Milner. Thanks, she beat you again. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand.
I want to abstain.
Motion carries, six with one abstention.
And that's at 10:30 tomorrow here, correct?
And just to clarify that, that's correct parliamentary procedure for him to abstain from voting for himself. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Board members, we had a wonderful board retreat, and we need to get credit for it. And all I need from you guys is a motion to approve the continuing education credit of three hours. Three hours. So at this time, we entertain a motion that we do so.
Motion.
Mr. Hinson's made a motion to approve three hours of continuing education credits for the board retreat we recently had. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, with Mr. Leatherwood. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mr. Moss is up on the table.
Yeah, Chairman Francis, and board, you have before you a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between Haywood County Schools and the Mountain Projects. Basically, what this will do, it just says that there'll be a collaborative partnership between Haywood County Schools and Mountain Projects, so that in the spring, when we get ready to send out information to parents about kindergarten registration and so forth, we send it to them. And then it also means that I sit on a readiness committee with Mountain Projects the spring before kindergarten starts, and basically, I share information with them regarding our kindergarten registration, and things that we might be able to do in partnership with each other to, I don't know, help the transition from head start to kindergarten be better and smoother.
And has our attorney looked at that, or is it something we've done?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We need a motion to approve the Mountain Projects memorandum of understanding.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Kirkpatrick made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
We have a question about paragraph B.
Paragraph B? He's good. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Moss. Now we have a Beginning Teacher Plan, Mr. Hines.
Mr. Chairman, board members, what you have before you is a motion to approve the Beginning Teacher Plan. This is required each year to submit to the federal government for Title II funding. And basically, it deals with staff development for teachers in their first or second year. Very straightforward, we do.
Even lateral entries.
Even lateral entries.
I saw that.
Yes, sir.
It's a pretty intense document.
It really is, yeah.
It sure is.
But I don't know that it requires board approval, but we would like to have it each year, just so you're aware of what we're doing with our Beginning Teachers.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, we approve the 2013-2014 Beginning Teacher Plan as presented.
I move we do that.
Ms. Milner's made the motion, second of Mr. Leatherwood. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, some policies from Mr. Shepherd.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, what we have before you tonight is one plan that, I mean, one policy that is not totally new, but it is almost completely rewritten, is the Growth and Improvement Plans for Licensed Employees. It is the old Action Plan Policy. And the reason for its change is that it reflects the new policy on teacher improvement and teacher evaluation. Basically, goes and explains all the terminology, gets into the alphabet soup of, you know, what a PGP and IGP and all those things are, tries to clearly lay it out for administrators and for teachers, what all these mean. Are there any questions on that policy? That is P-26, and that's for first reading and would be tabled for 30 days.
P-26 would be tabled for 30 days.
All right, and then these next two are the ones that you've already seen, and the first one's graduation requirements, that's C-1, and the only change we made to it was that we were adding in the language on the graduation project, being part of what students would do for graduation in this county. And the other one is totally new, the SA-20, Students with Food Allergies, and the only, you know, public comment we got on that was the, was the nice letter that Ms. Slate had sent in, and I thought was worded very well and was appreciated, that we are trying to come up with a plan, a common sense plan that takes care of students that are allergic to different kinds of foods.
Okay.
Any questions on any of these?
Any questions on CO-1?
I make a motion to please approve both policies, C-01 and SA-20.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve CO-1 and SA-20. I hear a second.
I'll second that.
Second, with Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work on the policy committee there, good work. Ms. Wood, calendar revision.
That's right. We have for your approval a correction to the current calendar, the school year that we're in right now, to the day count. It was off by one, so we needed, I corrected that, and you have it in front of you, I think.
Okay.
So that was the first correction. And then, based on the principal's meeting last week and the changes to the state legislature, we're asking for the end of the school year, in June, the 180th School Day be a full day and not a 10:30 dismissal day. And then that would move all of our- And then that would move all of our workdays till after the last day of school. And this is based on the state legislature passed a law requiring that all standardized testing be completed in the last five days of school for semester courses and ten days for year-long courses. And so they need that full day to get all the testing.
But it's not an hours requirement, it's a matter of full day to do the test.
Right.
Okay.
We have to, we have to allow for four hours for any EOG, UOC, or general administration. And so therefore, that would eliminate that ten thirty day.
Ms. Wood, I don't think there's any issues with the calendar as presented. I think, I've heard some board members talking about maybe the inclement weather piece on that, that we might want to discuss now in, in, in the open session.
Make that change as well?
That's fine, Ms. Francis, but Ms. Wood, again, you said something there, and I know towards the end of the year, this is going to really start coming up. Repeat, you're stating about the testing in the last five days. They're going to make-
For semester courses, in the last ten days for year-long courses, which would be elementary and Tusco.
Okay.
That's a new state regulation.
Okay, so in other words, this, where we get told we've tested a week ago, and we're watching Andy Griffith shows, the next three days is now not going to happen. Your last five days or last ten will be testing.
It's going to be real hard to watch anything during that time.
Thank you. I mean, again, I just-
Yes, sir.
Well, if questions come up, why not?
One thing it might help is when we get closer to that time, Dr. Nolte, if you might do like a press release thing close to that time and inform the public, and maybe the local paper would have an article of such that-
No vacations.
About that.
Could you do that now and then?
I think that'd be good. Now, I opened this up for discussion about, I think the question that I've heard from board members is about the superintendent discretion on the Saturdays. We basically directed her to, if it's closed on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, that we will make it up on Saturday.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I sat on the calendar committee last year. And I think this is the verbiage from the prior year calendar, that I don't think actually got changed over to this current calendar, from what I remember, and Dr. Nolte can help me remember some things here. But we had, during the calendar committee, we had said the first three days of snow, we would do those as teacher workdays. After that, then we would start using Saturday makeup school on a Monday, Tuesday. If the students miss on a Monday, Tuesday, then Saturday school would be used. And then on Wednesday would be up to the discretion of the superintendent. Now, I don't know where that verbiage, you know, what happened to it, but that was my recollection from what we-
What came out was the asterisk side that said, you know, makeup on Saturday, if we miss Monday, Tuesday, or even an optional Wednesday, that would be the first makeup, is what I have on the calendar.
Because of the controversy the prior year with that first snow day being on a, I think it was a Wednesday, and then we made it up on that Saturday, it got a lot of people caught off guard. So I think when we met with the calendar committee, we said the first three snow days, we would use workdays. And then after that, then we would start using the actual Saturday makeup school. Because I know, you know, when we set out the surveys, we got surveys back of when do you want to use the makeup? Do you want to, you know, use Saturdays, do you want to use workdays, do you want to use, you know, spring break, all that? I think from the consensus of what we got back was that they wanted to do, you know, some workdays first, and then the Saturday schools. But Dr. Nolte has also come up with a suggestion that we all want to consider, since, you know, we're talking openly here, that we may start, say, January, and in January, we start using Saturday schools. But if we miss any school before January, we'll use the teacher workdays to make those up. And that way, people know, they're not having to count, because it's the first snow day, or it's the second snow day. They'll know that come January, any, any snow on Monday, Tuesday, or optional Wednesday, we can make it up on Saturday.
I can't leave some discussion.
So that's, that's-
Could we, the question is, is could we table it, or do we need to approve the-
You know, last year we had snow in October.
Yeah, but the calendar part of this, does that need to be approved tonight?
I need to approve the day, I need you to approve the day count.
Okay. But we could table the weather piece of this?
Unless we have snow this month, because we want many kids to want to be in front.
I guess that's the reason we get paid the big bucks, is to make this harder to do. Because as it reads now, it would be, if we miss on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, then it's going to be-
The first option is to go-
It's Saturday. The board's directed it.
Is there a full calendar that was presented to the board last year?
I have it here.
Is that the one that was presented?
Yeah, this is the one that was presented, because there's been no changes in it, and that's what she's making. What it says is it gives you your list of days and stuff, and then it has an asterisk down where it says, makeup on Saturday, weather permitting, school miss closed on Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday would be optional.
Right, that's the way it read the prior year. And that's when we got the first snow day on Wednesday, and we went Saturday, and everybody was-
Up and on, correct.
The only thing I've got is, we, we stuck to a calendar, and if that's the calendar voted on, whether you're recollection, right, or not, Ms. Wood?
That's off the calendar, the calendar committee voted on it.
Right. You know, we got to give her an answer, or got to give the administration an answer today. And I'm offered this, is take a vote on it. But I understand that, from what I learned about the calendar, days are so important, we only have so many. So, you know, if we was going to make a suggestion to change something, I'd like to have time to really let the calendar committee bring that change completely back to us. About wait till after January to start this, that way you would have all the teachers and everybody have the right answers to ask.
Well, I- I tell you what, the answer would be possibly, if you agree to this, is that we go ahead and change it. We can change it next month. I mean, we, we, I've seen us change it four times in four months.
I've seen it.
Because it had to.
Four times in one night?
Well, yeah, I've seen that too.
We have a calendar committee meeting on October the twenty-first, where we will be talking about the inclement weather plan for the next school year.
Okay.
Mr. Francis, since you was on that committee, would it be okay if we just hold this till the next board meeting? Let it stand as it presented there? Would you be okay with that, and then?
I mean, I can be okay with it, but if we do have a Saturday, that's the first Saturday school, and-
Yeah, well-
October the twenty-first.
I'll direct this phone call.
Yes, sir. I tell you what, Mr. Francis, if I, if you're going to be that kind to me, I'll take the phone calls off of you, you understand, sir? Okay, because I, I know you, you people work hard on that calendar, that's, that's a, that's a painstaking thing. And, or, I don't care to say, if you feel that we need to vote, the first four days or inclement, I'm fine with that too. What do you recommend, I'll, I'll motion it.
The only thing I'm going to say is the less confusion it can be right now, the better off we're going to be.
Well, as much as information as we can get out there in public right now, too.
Because if you, if you go to, well, okay, the first three snow days is going to be workdays. And all of a sudden, the fourth one comes up, and everybody's like, we're going to go Saturday? That's the first thing you're going to hear. Of course, last year caught them off guard, and they went on Saturday, that quick.
The first day.
Nobody was really expecting it.
I'd like to submit, board, that we've not had snow days yet this year, and I feel pretty confident that if, if we made a decision, we could get that information to people. And it wouldn't derail a lot of decisions if they knew before there were any snow days. The reason I suggested that we begin in Saturday is, that's pretty, excuse me, Saturday, we begin Saturdays in January, is because that's easy to understand. We don't have to count one day, two day, three day, or four days, that we just, we begin using Saturdays in January, whether we've missed snow days or several. It just seemed like a reasonable approach to take. And of course, we'll do whatever the board wants to do.
If we were to have really bad snow in December and miss a week, can you make them up without doing Saturdays?
You'd have to add them on to the end of the year to make them up.
I think that's the reason why we went with like the first three or four, and that way, if we did have it real bad-
Now, Leona looked at that, and even like on the draft, I mean, he tells you about the Saturday school.
And then you've got the second one, if you're going to lose.
First two things.
First two.
Yeah.
How about first two?
Uh, well, here, let me just solve this problem. I want, I'd like to make a motion that we approve what Ms. Jeanne Wood has said. And also, in that same thing, change the, sorry, let me get, I've lost my board thing here. Let me get back to it, so I know. Oh, is it right there? And also, in the, the weather box down there, make that the first two snow days that we miss will be the workdays. Then, if we need to change it after the calendar committee, to put either more or go back to the January thing, then we'll come back at the next board meeting.
That's good.
That's fine, lady.
It's good confidence.
He said the first two snow days would be-
If you get first two, if you get two snow days before now, and the school board, you don't make teacher workdays.
Yeah.
And then, the next school board meeting will finish out the thing, and I put all that in a motion.
So Jeanne, we'll bring it back to the November board, the, with those two workdays, put in the first two days of snow.
And with a, some kind of input from the calendar committee?
Yeah, the calendar committee, you're saying that you're going to meet the twenty-first.
October twenty-first.
So, once you meet the twenty-first, then you can revisit the two thousand-
In November.
This, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and also finish out your other calendar for fourteen fifty.
That's good, I second that.
Do I hear a second to the motion on the floor?
Uh, second.
Second of Ms. Miller. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Does anybody know what we're really voting for? Just kidding. We're totally in control of this.
I say we'll figure it out in the next board meeting.
We know exactly what we're doing.
Just pray for no snow.
No snow until November to try.
We'll be good.
Well, I think that we've handled that by the two days, unless you get through. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. You have a somewhat done calendar now. Bet we got through it. Whoever's next, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, board members, you have before you Central Haywood High School's accountability goals for two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, which include increased student and grade point average, increased parent contacts, and increase the number of credits earned towards graduation, and they need your approval.
I make a motion to approve, uh-
The C A T. S A B C goals.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Kirkpatrick, second of Mr. Francis. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Douglas. We now have a report from the finance committee by Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance meeting, or committee met earlier today and reviewed all the local financial reports, and everything seemed to be in order, so at this time, I'd like to bring before the board a motion to approve the local monthly financial reports.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Francis, second of Mr. Kirkpatrick, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I have two more items that I'd like to bring before the board. The first is the finance committee has reviewed and approved the application for lottery funds to be distributed in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. And these funds are required for the thirty percent down payment on the Pisgah High School addition project. So I'm bringing this before the board for a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis from the finance committee, and second of Mr. Kirkpatrick, for the funding for the Pisgah High School project down payment.
And this is a required-
Yes.
Application that we have to do.
Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, lock sign?
Mr. Francis, I recuse myself based on the fact that the potential contractor for that job we have, my firm, has worked with-
Correct.
At this point in time, so-
Okay.
I accuse myself of that vote, please.
I will say that Mr. Morris did inform me before the meeting that he would not be voting on this particular issue. So let the record state that he has recused himself from voting on this issue. The motion does, however, carry six with one abstention.
I have one more item, Mr. Chairman. It's come to our attention that due to a contract non renewal, that we have been, the Waynesville Little League had been paying on some lights for field use, that we should probably have taken over. And so at this point, I am asking the board if we give permission to Mr. Hargrove to reimburse the Waynesville Little League for the amount of money they paid for the lights this last term, that they did not have a contract with us.
Did the finance committee vote on this?
Yes, it did pass the finance committee.
Okay, so it's coming from as a recommendation?
It's coming from the finance committee as a recommendation to reimburse it.
So is the motion on the floor, now I hear a second of Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Do we have a reference about how much that was?
Um, it's in the neighborhood of about fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars. Again, it's just for this past term, when, you know, they've- Paid for these lots for a period of time due to, you know, contract obligations, but, you know, those contracts were not there this year, and we recently found those out.
Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
That's all of them.
Is that awesome, finance committee? Okay, under personnel. And I'll get ahead of this when we do have one conflict of interest. Mr. Hinson is going to recuse himself on one of the items that we get to a bit later, okay?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have four separation from employments. You have one employment, you have four employment status changes, you have nine leave of absences. For your approval, you have two separation from employments, you have eighteen employments, eighteen employee status changes, you have two leave of absences, you have seven contracted services, you have forty-five substitutes, you have thirty-one employee coaches, and you have twenty non-employee coaches.
I make a motion that we approve personnel that Dr. Ann Garrett just gave us.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick, and a second from Ms. Miller to approve the personnel as presented at this point. Any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your approval, you have number four under non-employee coaches.
So move.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Kirkpatrick, and a second. And this is the one that Mr. Hinson is going to recuse himself from due to being a relative. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six with one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, we have thirteen volunteer services for approval.
Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion that we approve the thirteen for volunteer services.
Motion.
Mr. Hinson's made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second of Ms. Shandible. Any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Is there anything else that needs to come before this board? If not, meeting adjourned.